Salam aleikum. The silence will speak for itself. Twenty-eight thousand slaughtered, yet you're silent. More than 10,000 innocent children, yet you're silent. More than 10,000 innocent children, yet you are silent. Bombs are dropping, yet you're silent. New year, same genocide. Day eighty-eight, yet you're silent. We, the people, will not stay silent until you take action. A child is killed in Gaza, in Palestine, on average every 10 seconds that I was silent. Did you hear me? A child in Gaza, in Palestine, all of Palestine, was killed in the 10 seconds that I was silent. How many more need to be murdered? Twenty-eight thousand and counting. Vote for a ceasefire. I'll thank you when action's taken.
Greetings, members of Bridgeport City Council. My name is Mustafa Salahudin, and I reside at... First, let me thank this council for hearing this matter tonight, and I pray that after hearing all the testimonies, that you all give this matter serious consideration when voting on this very serious matter and situation. Having already heard countless repetitive and redundant testimonies on this matter, everyone here who has been before you hope and praise that you all have internalized the sentiments that have been conveyed before you regarding the situation in Gaza, and knowing quite a few of you who sit on this council, I know that this matter will be given conscientious and serious consideration when this council votes. In 2021, during the Kabul massive airlift evacuations of Americans who resided and worked in Afghanistan along with American servicemen and women, there were also countless heroic tales of hundreds of animal rescues, of dogs, cats, other animals and reptiles that took place during and after the evacuation of the Americans from that region. If that much emphasis can be put on innocent animals' lives, shouldn't the same emphasis be put on innocent human lives, or animals, or are animals more of a more value, or who we value more? The people of Palestine and Gaza that are being impacted by this war are innocent men, women, and children, and more importantly, human beings, and shouldn't be pitied like animals, or thought less than in order to be saved. Please vote to end this, to end this war, but to importantly ceasefire immediately. Assalamu alaikum wrakmatula wa barakatuh.
Okay, if he's not here, we go on to the next speaker. Speaker, Mr. Aziz Sial.
Dear council members, my name is Aziz Sial. I'm a board member of BICC located at 703 State Street, Bridgeport. I came from Pakistan in 1984 and settled directly in Bridgeport at Denver Avenue. I was a journalist, lawyer, and human rights activist in Pakistan. On my way to America, I was so happy to think that I was going to spend the rest of my life in a country that is champion of human rights in the whole world. When I came here, I was further surprised to see that this great American nation not only cares human lives, but fights for the rights of the animals too. I never thought that one day the political leadership of this great nation will go against basic human values and will help a foreign nation with our tax dollars to kill innocent children of Palestine. Today, the whole world is crying for peace, but only our country, America, is using its veto power in UN and has become the main hurdle in stopping the genocide. The champion of human rights has become the main financier and supporter of a nation that has crossed all the limits of humanity. Have you seen videos of Christmas and New Year eaves in Gaza, when the whole world was celebrating Christmas and New Year with their families and watching fireworks and ball drop? Israeli forces intensified its bombings on refugee camps and hospitals, rained Gaza with firebombs. They killed hundreds of innocent children and their parents in a few hours. Hospital lounges were filled with bodies. I have seen videos of pregnant women who were shot on their way to hospital and their bodies were run. Their bodies were run by bulldozers. According to CNN report, dead bodies from mass graves were dug by Israeli army, and bulldozers were run over them too. Premature babies, newborn, young and old, everyone was targeted. Is this humanity? I have seen videos, animals were eating the limbs of dead bodies under the rubble. There are more than 7,000 bodies still under rubble. Palestinians cannot bury their loved ones. The dead bodies have become pieces scattered. Have you heard of these types of atrocities in human history? If we put ourselves in their shoes and imagine what's going on, we will not be able to sleep. This is definitely not a war between two armies. This is genocide of the oppressed. Israeli farmer, head of Security Council, Gouria Elan, wrote in Israeli paper last week that we must kill every Palestinian to win the war. Netanyahu is already working on this barbaric plan. We are all watching this with our own eyes in 21st century, yet are being threatened to stay quiet. Our leaders have sold themselves by accepting AIPAC money from Israeli lobbyist groups, but I believe our nation has conscience, and they believe in justice and peace. I know without your resolution, this genocide will not stop, but it will bring us closer, and you will be able to tell your children and grandchildren that you did your part and try to save children of God. May the one day God will save your children from these calamities.
Victoria Majewski, through some speaking in support of the ceasefire resolution, because I have an obligation as part of my kinship with humanity and our planet to do so, for my love and admiration for Muslims, Gaza, and Palestine, but also for my love and respect for the Jewish faith. During World War II, my grandfather in the US Army was sent into Auschwitz concentration camp to liberate the Jewish Holocaust survivors because he spoke fluent Polish. We've all heard the phrase "never again," summarize the lessons from genocide and anti-fascist sentiment. And part of my ancestral healing, I'm here to remind you that when we say "never again," we mean "never again" for anyone. My family didn't endure that trauma for the US to go to support Israeli Zionists and acting on Palestinians what has been done to the Jewish during the Holocaust. I was disappointed by the rhetoric that I heard at the committee meeting last Monday, where one councilperson echoed pro-Israeli propaganda and misinformation in the name of this topic being irrelevant to Bridgeport and too complicated and historic to pick a side on. If you had listened to the speakers who have addressed you at the last two meetings, you have enough education on the subject to make an informed vote. At the December 4th meeting, just between the nine and 11-year-olds who came up here, they gave everything you need to know, explaining how the illegal occupation of Israel first began, from the first Nakba in 1948, down to the war crimes, the illegal war crimes Israel is getting away with today, like collective punishment, starvation, bombing hospitals, and withholding aid. You said Israel is a democratic state, yet ignore the apartheid regime, they have suppressed the Palestinian people into leaving them with no rights. You said there are trucks of humanitarian aid getting to Gaza, but fail to mention Israel is not allowing that aid to Palestinians. I need all of you here tonight to understand Zionism is white supremacy. Zionism has nothing to do with the Jewish faith, protection, health, or safety of Jewish people. For every one Jewish Zionist, there are 30 Christian Zionists like President Biden. I need you to understand that Zionism is anti-Semitic, and I need you to listen to anti-Zionist Jewish people who have unlearned the brainwashing. Speak to those in Jewish Voice for Peace, learn from Israeli peace activists in the group Standing Together for protesting the occupation, and Netanyahu calling for peace and a diplomatic solution. Israel may have a right to defend itself, but it does not have a right to impose an occupation on people. If this was about Hamas or October 7th, the US and Israeli armies would have used special forces units to capture them and not spent 88 days continuously bombing innocent civilians. The US is so invested in Israel's siege against Palestine for the natural resources that they want and to build out tourism over the graves of the now almost 30,000 people who they have murdered since October 7th, most of whom are women and children, all of who are innocent people, including the men. If you truly understood the history, you'd know how Israel created Hamas and understand that whatever Hamas is guilty of is a drop in the ocean compared to what Israel does to Palestinian civilians on a larger level and for decades longer. You are all in a unique position on this city council, where you have power in this moment to make a decision that will reach higher than Bridgeport and save lives. Please vote for a ceasefire.
Hello, my name is Shakur Abuznayd. I am board member and trustee in BICC Bridgeport Islamic Community Center. Last Tuesday, I heard one of the miscellaneous matters committee members saying why that issue, why this Israeli-Palestinian conflict matters to us. We were not elected in the office for this. And this issue is not related to the city of Bridgeport and us. I'm wondering if this colleague or this friend have been watching the news? Did she hear about what's happening in college campuses all over the country here, including Ivy League? Didn't she hear about President's approach to Congress to talk about it? Didn't she hear about the 20,000 to 50,000 are killed so far? Well, if she did not, then let me read a letter that was sent to President Biden, who I voted for once, would not happen again, from a Palestinian civilian who has lost all his family in this war. Quote, "Thank you, President Biden, for providing..." And you heard this correctly, he's thanking President Biden. "Thank you, President Biden, for providing $100 million in humanitarian assistance for the Palestinian people in Gaza and the West Bank. This funding will help support over a million displaced and conflict-affected people with clean water, food, hygiene support, medical care, and other essential needs. However, we thank you more for funding every single bomb dropped on Gaza, which has caused the killing of over 20,000 civilians, which is 70% of those killed are women and children. More than 10,000 children are killed, were killed. Another 50,000 people in Gaza have been wounded, a death toll of 20,000 in the enclave, where the population is estimated to be 2.1 million, means around 1 out of 105 people has been killed. That means 1%. In 90 days, our weapon killed 1% of a population. Thank you, President Biden, for requesting an additional $14.3 billion. Compare $100 million for food to Palestinian, and $14 billion, do the math. To fund more weaponry and bombs to kill more Palestinians, some of these weaponry weigh 2 tons, 2,000 pounds, which can destroy, which can destroy a whole square of buildings on top of the people and kill more children. Thank you, Biden, for advising the IDF to reduce the killing. He did not ask him to stop killing this, he did to reduce killing of the civilians, while the more you tell them, Biden, the more they kill."
Linda Biafor, most people call me Lu. I could tell you that lives depend on your decision today, which is true, but you should also know that all of our future votes depend on your decision today. I've heard the topic of ceasefire should be left to the experts, and that it has nothing to do with Bridgeport, Connecticut, despite the firsthand accounts of Palestinians in Bridgeport that we have heard, so I will try once again to convince you otherwise. As for expertise, I have a bachelor's degree in religion and anthropology with a specific focus in the processes of colonialism, domination, and resistance. I don't like getting academic, because I don't think academics equates to expertise, especially over firsthand experience, but I will get academic if that's what it takes. With this expertise, what I can tell you from even the slightest observation of Israel's relentless attack on the occupied Palestine this year, is that it is a full-blown genocide happening right before our eyes, which has been happening in blatant and well-defined stages for 75 years. It is in its second-to-last stage, extermination, if you know your stages of genocide, and there is a very specific reason most of us are only hearing about it now, dehumanization, stage four. Just because this is an international issue does not mean that it is not also a national, local, and community-based issue. The idea that this has nothing to do with us in Bridgeport is not only complicity in genocide, it is factually incorrect. We need the city of Bridgeport to help us call for a ceasefire, because this genocide is happening to us. It is happening to the people behind me, it is happening to the people in front of me, it is happening to me too. Tens of thousands of people are being murdered on our dime, on Bridgeport's dime, in our backyard. Zakorsky is building helicopters for Israel to drop even more bombs on the families of people that live in Connecticut. The tax money collected from those families is paying for the bombs. My taxes and yours are being carelessly spent on a genocide when we have to fight and scrape to spend it on our own community. If you still think this is too complex an issue to take a stand on, or that you couldn't possibly know enough to disagree with what our government is enabling in other parts of the world, I'm sorry that you have been made to feel so disconnected and disempowered. With that expertise I told you about, I can confidently say it is exactly the kind of mindset such a government wants you to have. They want you to believe there is nothing little all you can do about a US-funded concentration camp in the Middle East, and they want you to trust that, of course, a democratic government like America's will always do the right thing. But democracy isn't just an inherent virtue that does good simply by being there. Democracy means that the people have the power, so it is actually on us and on you, the Bridgeport Connecticut's, to shape our government and demand its morality and accountability when it fails and misrepresents us. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and assalamualaikum to my brothers and sisters here in the room. My name is Mahatya. I'm a Palestinian Arab-American, and I'm a Bridgeport resident at 2429 North Avenue. We, as your constituents, are horrified by what we are witnessing in Gaza and the West Bank. We are here to argue you to call for a ceasefire now. In the past three months, over 29,000 Palestinians have been killed in Gaza alone by the Israeli daily strikes. In addition, there is 4,936 Palestinian, as of today, men, women, and even children under the age of 18, have been taken from their families, are being held hostages by the Israelis. The harm on Palestinians is not new. In fact, the past 16 years, Israeli has had blockade on Gaza, that means 2.2 million civilians in Gaza have been under complete Israeli occupation and siege for 16 years, separated by apartheid wall. We need to argue and action now to prevent more loss of human lives. Act now to save people left homeless because of bombing campaign and violent airstrikes and air invasion and ground invasion. We are denied, they are denied food, water, basic human aids, and electricity that is needed even to power hospitals. We were hoping for the countdown of New Year to be come down to permit ceasefire, but it didn't happen. With your support and vote for favor of ceasefire resolution, we will be closer to stopping the genocide against children, women, and seniors. I would like to leave you with two, with a couple of questions. What is the use of the United Nations, international human rights, international law, World Health Organizations, and European Unions, if they haven't stopped what is happening in Gaza? Shame on them. The genocide in Palestine must stop now, with billions of our tax dollars supporting the genocide. My question to you is, what is Israel doing to you? What is Israel doing to our country? What is Israel doing to our cities? What is Israel doing to our states? Don't you think these tax dollars could be used to build housing for homeless, feed the hungry, and pay student loans, and for many things? And I hope that you are a part of the fight, for the sake of the children, come Bridgeport all the way to Gaza.
Dear city council members, a bit good evening. My name is Alredin Islam, 703 State Street. Sadly, do I pause and like to address any entity, whether it be city or state. As I have gotten older, I have become quite disillusioned with the idea of fair government in this country. One can go on for ages about the disparities in this very city, myself being a resident since 2018. That being the case, the abhorrence taking place on the civilians in Gaza and occupied West Bank, and this city's response to the rise of the federal government to de-escalate or not, will determine what moral fabric the people of Bridgeport are truly made of. So often mankind reflects on its actions in despair, in hindsight, the answer was right there. One can look at this land and find it stuck in a paradoxical time chamber because of how often we've eluded the truth. The United States spent endless billions last year alone to kill 20,000-plus working and middle-class Arabs, the threat of terror not present in the children's cancer war in Gaza, but indiscriminately bombed as if you were hoarding weapons of mass destruction. Funded by the land of the free and the home of the brave, we cried so many tears from Ukraine that our eyes dried by the time we got to Palestine. How judge me, or better yet, how will we be judged? According to the Gregorian calendar, the year starts anew. The question for me is, will we make the right choice? The answer, only time can tell, and us. I started this address by stating my beliefs in this system are forever tarnished, but if truth speaks to justice, and this council de-escalates, rehabilitates, and speaks out on behalf of the Bridgeport citizen, you not only be inspiring me, but others like me and younger people who are watching to give this thing you call a democracy a chance. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carmen Lopez. I'm a resident and a taxpayer of the city of Bridgeport, and I'm here to speak on your agenda item, a resolution calling for an immediate de-escalation and permanent ceasefire. I have reviewed the language of the resolution, the resolution that the city clerk included in the notice to the public. I read that resolution, and it was filled with historical inaccuracies and lacks balance and context. Now, according to the minutes of your meeting on December 4th, this resolution was added to your agenda off the floor by unanimous vote of all 20 members. In other words, the matter didn't appear on your agenda, and notice was not given to the public regarding the council's intention to act on a matter of international concern as well as a matter outside of its power and authority. You referred the resolution to the miscellaneous matters committee. On December 26th, the day after Christmas, you held a meeting, well, the miscellaneous matters committee held a meeting, and the city attorney at the time issued a letter and stated to you that the council didn't formally request an opinion, as the charter says, but that he would accommodate Ms. Vizo Panichia's request for some advice and guidance. City Attorney Anastasi presented the proposal at the meeting, and he highlighted, "This is just an advisory notice. There is no binding effect, and there is not a formal position on this issue." He also advised the committee, "This is not a matter within the jurisdiction of the city council." The committee chose to disregard that advice, and believe it or not, I believe the city attorney was correct. Chapter 5, Section 7 of the city charter defines your powers and responsibilities. The Connecticut general statute do as well. They delineate the powers of a municipal legislative body, which is what you are. Nowhere, either in the charters of the general statute, is this council authorized to pass resolutions in the form of an advisory opinion concerning international affairs, foreign relations, or other matters, which are properly committed to the Congress of the United States. This is not to say that these issues are not important. Each member of this council and every resident of the city has an absolute right to express his or her opinion, but you should not do this in the form of a resolution adopted in your official capacity. You were not elected to make pronouncements on foreign policy in the name of 140,000 people who reside in the city of Bridgeport. I believe that acting on this resolution would be setting a... I believe that acting on this resolution would be setting a dangerous precedent. Remember, municipalities have no inherent power. Thank you for your attention.